Good evening to everyone and welcome to the Thursday, February 4th, virtual special meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board. I thank you all for attending with us virtually here on this evening. For all of you there watching from home, all of our citizens in the community. Before we get started, I want to give a special welcome to Councilman Dr. Mark Whitaker for joining us on this evening. He has been the faithful school board member and also one of our biggest advocates on the city councils. We welcome him for joining us here on this evening. I ask at this time if we could pause briefly for a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now be led in our pledge of allegiance by Vice Chair Lakeisha Axson at this time, followed by the mission statement.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you so much. We'll now have attendance and Adam Clerk.
Ms. Axson?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Parent?
Here.
Ms. Shoemake?
Present.
Mrs. Thomas? I thought I saw Mrs. Thomas.
All right, I'm here. I got disconnected from audio.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Tillage?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Reverend Patillo?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you so much. We'll now have agenda item 2.6 roll call vote approved of the agenda for tonight, February the 4th, 2021. Our entertaining motion at this time.
Vote for approval, Axson.
Second, Ms. Shoemake?
Motion has been made by Ms. Axson and second by Ms. Shoemake. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here. I'm sorry, yes.
Ms. Tannen?
Yes.
Mr. Parent? You have most attributed.
Sorry. Yes.
Ms. Shoemake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Agenda item 3.1, recognition of Virginia School Board Association School Board Clerk Appreciation. Oh, is Dr. Bracy up here?
Yes, sir. You went out. I didn't notice you had called on me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, so just to make you aware that February 15th through 19th is the Virginia School Board Association School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. So that does coincide with our regular scheduled meeting. So we will be at that time officially formally recognizing our board clerk and deputy clerk at that time. And we, as I'm sure you all do, appreciate all the work that they do for us in the school division.
Absolutely. We cannot thank them enough for everything they do for us and for the school division. And we'll recognize them officially at our next meeting. Discussion item 3.2, the superintendent's estimate of needs. And before I cut out the Bracy Ford, I just asked that we allow him to get through his entire presentation. So any questions you have, please make notes while he's giving this presentation and we can ask questions at the end. Thank you, Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Chair Reverend Patillo and Vice Chair Ms. Atkinson and members of the school board. Tonight, it is my honor to bring forward for your consideration my superintendent estimate of needs for fiscal year 2021-2022. As you are aware, this process involves a lot of communication and collaboration with many stakeholders in our community. It is my hope that as you listen along to tonight's presentation, you will see your input as well as that of staff and families. In addition, as this current year has been challenging for all of us, we present this budget with the hopes that 2021-2022 will bring us back to some sense of normalcy. As we begin, I want to turn to our CFO, Mr. Theo Falt, to walk us through the first few slides of our presentation outlining how we develop our budget. Mr. Falt?
Good evening, Chairman Reverend Patillo, Vice Chair Ms. Atkinson, school board members. The community as large, good evening. We wanted to bring you the budget this evening and give a good overview of what we have in the budget so that you and the public would understand how we developed it and what is included in our budget for FY 21-2022. While the board is well acquainted with this lovely slide that we have here breaking down the budget, I wanted to give the public an understanding of how our budget is made up. First, if you look right in the center, the general fund. That is the epicenter of our budget, the largest amount of our budget. This is the general day-to-day operations of the school division. That's where they're held within the general fund. The next largest fund is our risk management fund at 10% of the budget. The risk management fund accounts for all of our expenditures associated with self-insured health insurance plans, insurance premiums, and workers' compensation. Thirdly, the next largest at 9% is the grants fund. Obviously, that is grants that we get from federal, state, and local organizations that provide grants to us. For example, special ed, which manages our special needs population or our Title I grant that manages economically disadvantaged students and the instruction of them and providing supports there. Our next fund at 4% is our cafeteria or food services fund. That manages all the food services that are involved in the school division, all of our meal service, everything that we provide for our students with meals each and every day. And then lastly, the textbook fund. Obviously, that is for purchases of textbooks and materials that allow us to provide instruction. That's about 1% of our budget. Next slide. As we look at this slide, I wanted to give you a snapshot of the total of all five funds. At this point, it's about $216.6 million. The general fund being the largest, $165.5. You can see the other amounts there on the screen. The rest of this presentation will focus mainly on the general fund. That's where we have the most flexibility and the most information to give in regards to some of the supports and increases within the budget for our student body and school as a whole. Next slide. This gives a snapshot of the proposed budget of our operating budget of what is included. If you look here at $165.5 million for FY, should be 21-22. That is $5.5 million more than our budget from last year. We'll go into detail as to what is included in those amounts a little later. But this proposal includes initiatives that were identified by you, the school board, staff, and our community as a whole as priorities. These priorities include employee raises, our employees' salary increases, additional instructional positions to enhance the student achievement, and a continued focus on student supports with our return to in-person learning. We'll also look to add to our information and instructional technology teams to support the numerous items of technology that were added in relation to COVID-19. And lastly, we're going to look to include some funds to continue to enhance our instructional programs and our technology for the school division as a whole. Later in this presentation, you will hear from Dr. Bracy. He will give you specific additions that we made to this budget. And again, these initiatives will allow us to address those priorities that were made very clear to us by our stakeholders. In short, we work very diligently to balance a conservative budget of need. The school division needs to upgrade certain areas and make additions in other areas to ensure that our students receive that quality educational experience that they so richly deserve. So this proposal underscores that need to request additional funding from city council to accomplish that goal. We'll get to the specifics of that in a little bit, but first I wanted to take a look at our current funding situation because obviously we start with revenue when we start a budget. As you will note from this slide, the largest portion of our budget comes from state school funds, from state funds as well as sales tax funds. Most of our state funds are derived from a calculation based on our average daily membership, which is taken on March 31st of every year. Our average daily membership now is projected to decrease next year to about 12,794 students. The number this year that we based the budget on was 13,177 students. Obviously, statewide, we've seen that school divisions have had decreases in students due to COVID-19 and the situation we're in. That is a total of about 383 students that we had a decrease. That's important because that drives how much revenue we receive from the state. So our revenue outlook for this year, we're looking at from a state perspective, it looks like revenue is going to go up based on the governor's proposed budget that he proposed back in December, approximately $2.1 million, largely for three reasons. Number one, an increase of about $1.3 million in at-risk funding for students who are determined to be educationally at risk. Basically, the state defines that based on the number of free and reduced lunch participants that we have in the school division. Secondly, the state this year put in the budget, the governor, a funding for a 2% bonus starting on September 1st of 2021 for all SOQ instructional and support position. That amount totals about $1.1 million. And I want to make it clear that's a bonus, not a raise, that the governor has put in his proposed budget at this time. Lastly, this was a beneficial thing that the state did for us. I talked about enrollment loss. Well, the state decided to add what they call no-loss funding to this budget proposal. Due to the pandemic, we know, as I said, these divisions across the Commonwealth have experienced a decrease in average daily membership, which is a key component of our revenue. So we were not immune to that, as I said before. So the state decided that they would hold us harmless for that enrollment loss. So those 383 students that I just talked about, they're going to hold us harmless for that. So to put that in perspective for you, if they did not put that whole harmless or no-loss funding in, we would have lost about $1.7 million. This budget would have been $1.7 million less in revenue from the state. They actually made up the enrollment loss on their side to assist us. So that was a good thing that the state did, and hopefully that will stay in the budget as we go forward. When we look to local funds, you look and you see that that's about 35% of our budget at about $57 million, almost $58 million. That amounts to about a $929,000 increase in revenue for this next year. So as a result of those two things, we're projecting to realize about $3 million increase in revenue with our state and local revenue increases. And our budget would total 163.1 million based on the revenue as outlined in this slide. However, with the increased state and local revenue, we still need additional revenue to fully fund all the initiatives that we need and that are covered in this budget. As this current budget is not enough to cover those initiatives, we would be requesting additional city funding of $2.5 million to address the needs of Portsmouth Public Schools. And now with that said, Dr. Bracy is going to go into a little more detail as to what is included in the budget and how we arrived with the numbers on the expenditure side.
Thank you, Mr. Falt. My first priority this year is a familiar one, and that's employee compensation. It has been at the top of my budget priorities since coming to Portsmouth, and I know I'm not alone in believing we need to be as competitive as possible in offering staff salaries. In addition to your input as board members asking for employee compensation to be prioritized, compensation was also a top priority according to the results of our 2021 budget survey. As you know, the governor's proposed by union budget for fiscal year 2020 through 2022 includes a 2% bonus for all SOQ-funded positions. However, I have to be clear that, so that you know that the state is providing funds for a 2% bonus, Mr. Falt mentioned that earlier, and that's not a permanent salary increase. Therefore, there's no state funding for salary increase. That said, the importance of providing our employees with a salary increase cannot be underestimated. We must remain competitive in the employment marketplace and with teacher shortages being a nationwide problem. Providing a competitive wage for instructional staff is vital to the continued success of our school division. Therefore, our proposal tonight underscores our commitment to ensuring that our current and future employees are compensated for their hard work and dedication to the educational success of our student body and community. Again, I want to reiterate that the governor's proposed budget included a funding for a 2% bonus, which will be effective on September 1st, 2021. Usually when you hear of bonuses, raises being included, they usually start in July, but this doesn't start until September 1st, 2021, and it was a bonus. So keep in mind that the funding from the state for this raise only includes the SOQ-funded positions, which are the minimum staffing standards for school divisions in Virginia. However, the feedback we received from our community and our budget survey and from the board members exhibited a strong desire to provide all of our employees with a raise. Therefore, we included a 2% raise in this budget proposal. The cost of a 2% raise is $3 million and is included in our budget estimate for the fiscal year 2021-22 school year. In addition to staff raises, this budget also includes approximately 2.2 million of initiatives that are designed to enhance instructional programs, student supports, administrative and operational areas, and information technology. In the next few slides, I will give you background information on why these initiatives are necessary additions to the fiscal year 21-22 budget. In the category, we have added the following positions to support instructional excellence. The governor's proposed budget provided additional SOQ funding for school counselors. This will continue the state's multi-year initiative to reduce the staff ratios at all levels to 325 to 1, and that's at the elementary, middle, and high school level. To comply with this reduction in staffing ratios, we would be required to add four elementary school counselors and one high school counselor. We're also looking at the addition of four middle school music teachers. Currently, the high school music teachers serve both the high school and middle school in their zone. The addition of these teachers will allow the teachers at both levels to focus on the school and level in which they are assigned. And if this sounds familiar, board members, we've talked about this the last couple of years, but due to cuts that we had to make to fall within our budget that we was allocated, those were some of the first positions that left our budget. We're looking at a testing supervisor to help our Office of Research and Evaluation to continue to effectively manage and provide valuable information as it relates to the assessment and accountability at the state and federal levels. This will be increasingly important as we return to in-person instruction and work to identify gaps in achievement and learning. We're also looking to expand our CTE program. We're looking at a CTE teacher that will focus in a new public safety course that we will develop in conjunction with the local agencies. This position will instruct students in the areas of police and fire, the fundamentals of those areas. We also intend for this program to assist our city in developing a pipeline of new recruits to their police and fire departments. We're also looking at the addition of an online learning specialist to support our virtual learning platforms such as Schoology, Apex, WHRO, and VDOE. This position would assist in the development and management of future virtual learning platforms and initiatives. We're also looking to add two ELL instructional assistants to assist our growing ELL population. These positions would assist in small group instruction and would increase student supports. We're also looking to add a new position that we're going to recommend is the executive principal for elementary schools. As you know, equity has become a major priority in all school division efforts. Specifically, this board asked for the creation of an equity officer, which we will address soon. However, we know true equity does not lie in one position or in one office. It's a cross-categorical effort. As such, this position is recommended tonight in order for it to serve as an instructional resource for our elementary schools and support our elementary principals in their delivery of instruction and curriculum, as well as ensuring that the elementary students are receiving the teaching resources, supports necessary to be able to take part in our secondary programs, which include early college, first college, CTE programs, and our AP courses. In starting this work in the elementary years, we're building a strong foundation for all of our students to build upon their future endeavors. Finally, instructionally, we also have the inclusion of funds to assist Churchville Elementary School with support for summer school and remediation activities. Since Churchville is our only non-Title I school, we're providing them with extra resources to provide these services for their student body. In total, these additions will cost approximately $939,000. Next up is student support services. As we know, these are critical to the success of many of our students and families. As such, we have included the following to address where we can provide additional assistance to our students and their families. We're looking at the two OTPT therapists. Currently, we use outside contractors in some cases to provide the OTPT therapy services. We're proposing to hire two OTPT therapists to decrease our dependence on outside contracted labor to assist our therapists in developing better and long-term relationships with our students and their families. Funding also to support the second year of a plan to provide equity adjustments for some of our nurses. This was first presented to the school board, as you probably will remember, back in December of 2019. We included this initiative in this current year's budget and wanted to follow through on our commitment to our nurses. This will allow our nurses to attain equity with their peers. Other adjustments for student support positions include the extension of contracts to provide better service during the summer months. Some areas include immunization records, health physicals review, mandated special education testing, and screening required during the summer. These additional supports will cost approximately $204,000. As we all know, administration and operation are vital components to the success of any school division. With that in mind, we have proposed the following personnel additions in this category. Supervisor of gifted and dual enrollment programs. This position would take on the role of managing our gifted program and also be the point of contact for all dual enrollment programs with TCC, such as first college, early college, dual enrollment, and things of the like. As we discussed earlier, the need for focus on equity is more important than ever before. You may remember at the reorganization, Chair Reverend Patillo appointed a new committee to explore the possibilities of the school division bringing onboard an equity staff person so that it will help the division be in compliance with the many school divisions across the Commonwealth. Many school divisions across the Commonwealth, some have these positions in place. We've included this in our budget to assist us in evaluating and addressing the equity across our K-12 instructional programs. So this is actually a placeholder that we have in our budget. Once the committee reviews the need for equity for this type of position, we will at least have this in our budget. We also propose inclusion of a human resource organizational specialist. This will provide better support to principals and department heads in the screening and hiring process. In addition, this position would also oversee and ensure fidelity within our evaluation system. They would also have a primary responsibility for managing all of the HR information systems for the school division. To help us build awareness and understanding of our division, myriad of offerings and supports for our students and families, we've included the addition of a lead multimedia specialist for our communications department. This person will become the lead videographer and editor in the Department of Communications and the management of the PPS brand and strategic storytelling and creative delivery of our message. This position will also be instrumental in boosting community engagement through multimedia platforms. To give you an example, those of you that have been following our campaign here to help, we launched videos and commercials that you will see that we provided, providing on many different platforms. And that level and that quality of video is something that we want to be able to do in-house. With that particular segment, we had contracted services come in and put that together for us. But we have so many great things going on that we could feature in our school division by having someone onboard. It would save us the costing dollars in getting that out, and it would be remarkable for us in getting our word out and what we're doing in our school division. As we embark on the rezoning and redistricting process, we have a need for an additional bus router. This would decrease our dependence on using contracted services with our routing vendor and give another resource as we continue to provide our community with quality and timely transportation services. So as you can see and hear, a lot of these positions, we're talking about contracted services, and then with us only having one bus router, if there's a need for additional services, that particular person may have to work overtime. So we see it as being efficient in requesting to bring another bus router onboard. The total for these additions is approximately around $377,000. As we all know, information technology is of vital importance in a school division's life cycle. That's definitely an understatement when we consider the effect of COVID-19 this past year. Therefore, to continue to support that area, we propose the following staffing additions. Five technology resource teachers or TRTs. TRTs support technology within the school buildings and support classroom teachers. In the past, some schools would share TRT. The addition of five TRTs would allow each school to have their own. The next is technology support technicians to provide support for technology-related issues for the entire school division from the information technology department. Over the past several months and due to COVID, you know, we have become a one-to-one school division with devices and other forms of technology. And the need for support for our students and parents has increased substantially with this increase of these devices. The inclusion of these five positions would allow us to provide higher quality and more timely customer service. We're also looking at an enterprise database administrator for our MUNIS system. This position would assist in supporting our enterprise resource system that controls the finance, human resources, and other functions. Currently, we rely on the city's database administrator to assist with these functions. This will give us an in-house resource, and we would like to be proactive if the need arises to manage our own systems. Again, these work schedule changes would provide additional resources in the summer months to assist in preparing our schools to open in the fall. In total, these additions will cost approximately $671,000. This budget also includes other recommended budget initiatives that we will consider, and we also consider them to be critical part of our operation. Many of these initiatives are contiguous of programs that we participate in, and some are new initiatives based on changes in our current operations. First, we will look at additional support of student hardware and software and classroom technology to ensure that our students and staff have access to current technology resources to enhance and making learning more engaging and inviting. more engaging and inviting. This includes the purchase of new Chromebooks, iPads for students and the purchase of additional laptop carts for classroom use, replacement of classroom projection systems and other technology initiatives. A continuation of the support and expansion of our dual enrollment, first college, early college programs that we collaborate with TCC. Also, we're looking at the increases in the amounts allocated to keep up with the rising costs of providing services to our special education students who attend our regional programs such as Ccel. We're looking at funding to support professional development so that staff members continue to be well-trained and familiar with the latest educational strategies to foster student success as well. As social, emotional, learning and mental health are a priority for the school board and our community as a whole, we propose to add funds that will allow us to procure contractors that can provide services to support our student body. We determined that contracted services may be the best route to take since we will need to identify the areas that are most critical as when when we return to in-person learning so that we can tell of these services and solutions to the our students' needs. We met with city representatives back in the fall of twenty twenty and they informed us that they plan to discontinue providing fleet management and ground maintenance to us as of June thirty, twenty twenty-one. Therefore, this change requires an increase in the budget so that we can continue to ensure that our fleet is well-maintained and are available for us to provide resources to our students and staff. We also want our grounds to be inviting for our visitors. Currently, we're planning for this transition and exploring our options as it relates to procuring an outside vendor to provide the fleet management and ground maintenance services. We're also looking to increase our general fund transfers so that it will cover the increases in risk management claims and expenditures. To summarize, we're expecting proposed revenues of approximately a hundred and sixty-three million. Our total expenditures are expected to be approximately a hundred and sixty-five million. As a result, we request, as Mr. Falk mentioned, close to a funding of two-point-five million from the city to fund the initiatives in our general operating budget. This request represents the needs of the school division. And I would be remiss if I did not request what was needed to provide a high-quality and world-class education for the students in the city of Portsmouth. We cannot fall behind our peers and we must continue to provide adequate resources to our students, staff and community as a whole. As I conclude tonight, let me thank our incredible budget team led by Mr. Falk for all of their efforts in bringing this presentation to you. I'm immensely proud of the forward-thinking and proactive approach this budget represents. I also fully believe that every inclusion in this budget points to success seen in this photo here. It provides the support to ensure that every one of our students crosses his or her graduation stage, ready and prepared to take the future ahead of them. Members of the school board, this concludes my overview of the superintendent's estimate of needs. My staff and I are ready to receive any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bracy, to you and Mr. Falk and your staff for putting together your estimate of needs. I'm sure that we have a ton of questions, so what I'm going to do to make it easy is I'm just going to ask all the board members as they appear across my screen. And then you can receive your questions at that time and I'll wait till the end. Uh, Dr. Whitaker, you're first on my screen here.
Yes, just for clarification with the bonus and the raise. Is that both or is that just the two percent raise?
That includes a two percent raise.
Okay.
Yes.
Alrighty, that was my that was my only question for right now.
And that's for clarity, Dr. Bracy, so that's a two percent raise and that's no bonus, correct?
Right, that's no bonus. This the state, they're giving us money for bonus, but we're using the two percent that they're giving us to put toward a two percent.
Okay, that that's why I want to make sure we can use the funds for that. Okay, thank you.
I do have one other question. The can you explain a little bit more what the executive principal would do?
Okay, the executive principal in looking at some school districts usually have that listed in in different. They list it differently as far as the title. This is comparable to a director of elementary education or an elementary leadership specialist. And what they do, they work primarily with those principals, well, in this case, the elementary principals so that there are any leadership efforts and and assistance that that that's needed, they can provide that for them. A few years back, we had our content people providing support for content and also providing leadership for them. So right now, we pull the content specialists out so that they could focus on support on those curriculum areas. And right now, you know, the the leadership piece is has been added to Dr. Nguyen and Dr. Karmarty along with the other departments and people that they supervise. So we wanted to give the the principals, you know, someone that could support them from the leadership standpoint. This is not a position that will be, uh, what I would say directly involved with evaluation, but they will report to Dr. Karmarty, Dr. Nguyen and myself as we evaluate the principals. They can provide some support for us when we when we do our mid-year and final year evaluations for them. So it's a leadership support piece. Currently, we have contracted services come in and work with some of our principals, but we we want to move that toward in-house so that we can have those relationships within.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parent, you're next on the screen here. Do you have any questions, Mr. Parent, for Dr. Bracy and staff? You're 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 on mute.
I'm mute, Claude. No, I I mean, when Mrs. Thomas and I met with Dr. Bracy and Mr. Falk at our budget meeting the other day, uh, we went through this budget in detail, just like Dr. Bracy did tonight. Everything that um that Dr. Bracy has requested, of course, is an estimate of needs and that is what city council expects and the public expects from this board, that we are to present the needs of of the school division so that we can provide our students and our teachers and our staff with quality quality instruction and quality support. I know that the ticker price might be that when you look at two-point-four million dollars from the city, that may be something that we're going to have to, you know, to explain, but I think Dr. Bracy's done a great job tonight and looking at all of the areas when we look at uh, instructional positions, administration, transportation, information technology. There, I mean, there's just a lot of gaps that we've had in our budget for the last, I don't know, I've been on the board ten years now. We've had a lot of gaps uh, that we've had to cut and a lot of needs that we need that that we've asked for and because of of the reduced revenue of from either the state or the city, we've had to cut those. And so now we come back and we're saying, ladies and gentlemen and the public, these are the needs that we need for our students to move forward. And especially in the area of instruction and because that is that's where I spent most of my 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 life there in in Portsmouth uh, is an instruction and dealing with now with technology and all the things that were that are involved in in that. And we did spend some time, Dr. Whitaker, on the executive principal. I we went into some depth with that because I asked the same question that you asked. And and I'm I'm very satisfied with the answer that Dr. Bracy gave you the board tonight because uh, years ago, we had, uh, as he said, we had like a director of elementary, director, secondary, and then we had subject areas, subject area specialist. And sometimes, you know, when you're going out to help principals and they're not, uh, and they're not supposed to, the subject area people were not supposed to be involved in with evaluation. And in some cases, it ended up that they were. And so there was not a lot of trust then with principals because they felt like this person was coming in and saying, you know, going back to the superintendent, which is not Dr. Bracy, it was a former superintendent, that this person wasn't doing good. And my concern was, I don't want that to happen with this position. This position ought to be a clearly supports position that when a principal needs some help, uh, they come up with a a plan to help them and it's not one that they will go in and and uh, evaluate and they'll build trust. So Dr. Bracy's budget is right on target and all of these needs that we have presented that he has presented tonight, we fully support. And I'll let Ms. Thomas, if she wants to add anything to it.
Yeah, Ms. Thomas, you're actually next next on my screen anyway.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman Patillo. And thank you, Ms. Schoolwork Member Parent. I won't take too much time, but yes, based on the budget finance committee meeting, everything presented here, I already had a chance to ask any additional questions, including the executive principal, which again, reiterate, it's is to offer additional support in a non-supervisory way. So in the reason that Dr. Bracy asked him why was at the elementary level and he felt that that was where the need was, since we have the largest number of elementary schools there. Also, supporting the possible gap in the achievement gap since we've been in period of time is very important, really, this is at the level. Being a new school board member, you know, we submit our needs. Oops, I might be breaking up there. Am I breaking up you all? A little bit. It's got a signal, a signal warning. So without, just to reiterate, some of the things that you know, I asked about like, are we still, is this still on the table? And Dr. Bracy and Mr. Falk said, yes, we still have other needs on the table. What this budget represents is what we need right now. And as Mr. Parent said, even some of the things that we've delayed in the past, we have to fill in that gap. We have to bring those things forward. So I felt comfortable based on that budget finance committee meeting that this is a true estimate of needs. And even with the additional two-point-four million dollars, our teachers need that raise. So I feel comfortable that, you know, going forward with city council, that's definitely represented in this budget. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I miss you, mate.
Thank you, Chairman Patillo. I actually don't have any specific questions. Uh, thank you, Dr. Bracy and Mr. Falk for this wonderful presentation. Um, I just wanted to make sure that we have some type of program to ensure that our students will possibly get to a good point educational-wise, being that we're in this virtual setting. And I hope to have that, you know, be clear in the budget. So I think you guys did a wonderful job. That's the only concern that I had. That's the only thing that I brought up to you during our meeting anyway, was that I wanted to make sure that we can bridge the gap. And that's about it. I don't have any questions or any concerns other than that. Thank you so much, Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Yes, uh, thank you, Chairman Patillo. I I met, we met with Dr. Bracy and of course, uh, I think we all had the questions about the executive principal, but he explained it well as a support position, not a supervisory one. And also, I was listening to the news report where Virginia Beach was offering a five percent increase to its employees. And I was reminded that Dr. Bracy, I believe, told us that we were the only school division last year that was able to continue and give the two percent raise. So I think it's very important that we do present to city council that we give a raise to all of our employees because we have a major teacher shortage, bus drivers, not just teachers, but all the people that are involved in getting our kids to school each day. So I I think this is very reasonable. And of course, I think as a board member Thomas said, we have a lot of needs. A lot of needs that, of course, we can't get them all at one time, but I do know that for the last four years, it has been a trial and tribulation trying to get the bare minimum with the past council. So I appreciate the hard work that Dr. Bracy, Mr. Falk and his team did to bring this to us. And I just wanted to add one other thing. I know we talked about fleet maintenance and the ground maintenance coming back to Portsmouth. And that I don't want the people to be confused, the listening audience, that they provided that to us because we still had to pay for it. We they they took the money from us. So they're going to give it back to us, which I think is a great idea because I think we we probably can handle it a little better because we still had to transfer the money to them to do it. So with that being said, I, my first priority when we met, when I met with Dr. Bracy was, of course, the raises for for the staff. And so I'm pleased because we 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 do have a a major job in getting our students back up to par because of this pandemic and the virtual learning. And we heard that there are three hundred and some that have fallen off that we really have to get get involved, whether it's extended day, summer school, tutoring or whatever, but we do need to have those people in place and the funds in place to do that. So I I concur with the superintendent's budget.
Thank you so much, Ms. Williams. Ms. Heinz.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you. Chairman Chairman Patillo, I think you did the right thing and just going down the line. Otherwise, the hands would have been flying everywhere. So I was happy to sit and wait my turn and not feel slighted because I knew it was coming. So thank you. As as everybody else has talked about the elementary, the executive elementary principal, um, when we met in our curriculum and instruction meeting, Dr. Bracy did bring it to us. And we did go back and forth inside the committee meeting about the need for it. When you talk about the gaps in learning, when you talk about the additional testing, when you talk about uh, state reviews for those schools that are accredited with morning, this and that and the third, it is an additional support slash mentor person, not necessarily that evaluation piece. And so um, I I think that it is that it is needed and I think that we will benefit from having somebody in that mentor role to kind of pass on their previous knowledge and their previous experiences to somebody that may be younger, that somebody may that is in the middle of going through it to help them grow. So there was a lot of back and forth about it. So it it's there and I think it is much needed. As other people have said in this budget, uh, for the past four or five years now, we we've had to cut and cut to get to our um, to the bare minimum. And so we have to start putting back in place some of the things that we need to move us forward. And I really think that this budget does that. It addresses the immediate needs, as Dr. Bracy has said, um, with the instruction and the technical supports for our staff, for our students and for our parents, um, for an increased focus on some things. I'm really also excited to see the splitting, the the delineate, the the splitting of the CTE and First College um, with the dual enrollment because if that is, because both of those are great programs that we do have. And the person that we have over both of them right now, it is very hard to manage programs of that size in one person. So I really think that giving somebody that position so that they can be laser-focused on it will enhance and will grow these programs for our students and for our division. In in talking about raises, for the now seven budgets that I have been here for, we have only not given a raise in one year. for the now seven budgets that I have been here for, we have only not given a raise in one year. However, while a two percent raise has been needed and needs to be done, I'm going to advocate that we start looking at a pay and compensation study and talking with our members of council, so that we can start getting rid of some of the compression that our teachers feel. Um, and so while a two percent raise is needed and is warranted, and it's always welcome, I would like for us to start moving to a pay and compensation study and to setting funds aside to take some of that compression off of our teachers, to get our teachers back on their right steps. Um, and as far as retaining and recruiting, if we can get our steps right for our teachers, that is going to be a selling point when you look at Portsmouth versus your other divisions. So I support the two percent raise, but I'm going to publicly advocate and work for us to secure funding for a study, but then how do we implement it? Um, and so that is going to take extra funding, but first we need to know what we need to ask for. So um with that, I am done. Um, and I will pass the, the floor on to somebody else. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Uh next, we have uh Mr. Tillinger and then Vice Chair Atkinson.
Yes, thank you Chair. Um first, I want to thank um Dr. Bracy and his staff um for this presentation um on the estimated needs. Um, I do think that this budget um did um in fact, give a good overview of the needs of the school division um as far as bridging the gap um for our students and our staff. Um, I'm definitely in favor of the two percent raise for all of our employees. Um, I would in the future um also be looking, be interested in step raises um and see if we can look at that as well. Um, as far as the CTE teacher for the public safety course, I think that's a great addition uh for our school division. Um, especially with the um partnering with our fire department and our police department in the city of Portsmouth. Uh, hopefully, some of our kids can get trained to get um some of those jobs and to improve um our public safety here in the city of Portsmouth. Um, also, as far as the um um music teachers for the middle schools, I think that is a great asset. Um, I know our high school music teachers have been working double time and going um from high school and traveling to the middle schools. And so I think this is a great addition to supporting the arts um in our school division. So um thank you very much, Dr. Bracy and your staff.
Thank you so much, sir. Uh Vice Chair Atkinson?
Thank you Chair Patillo. So the, the, the benefit of going last is basically um everything has either been asked or addressed. Um, so um I'm just happy to see um that we continue to give raises to our staff. I would like to see if we can um add a bonus um somewhere um in, in this budget to see if we can squeeze that in. I'm also happy to see the uh diversity, uh the diversity, inclusion and equity officer, which um will handle all those roles. But um everything has been addressed. Um, I'm, I'm okay with what Dr. Bracy has presented. And that's it.
Thank you so much. And before I ask my questions, uh Mr. Hunt, did you have any questions you would like to ask uh from your perspective as a student in Portland Public Schools?
Thank you, no sir.
I, I did have a, a couple of questions, uh Dr. Bracy and staff uh that I wanted to raise. The first, I may have missed it, with the executive principal for elementary, uh was there any particular reason why we didn't have a secondary as well? Or do we feel like the needs are less or? Uh, because I know in most divisions, they actually have um a elementary and a secondary. Either director or executive principal. Was there a reason why we just stuck with elementary on that?
Well, we um, we initially um to see in our committee, subcommittee, and we talked about having both the elementary and secondary position. And I, and, and what I was um informed of, of course, this is something that was in place before. So I guess the concern was, what would this position do? So I think if I didn't want to lose, lose this position altogether, one of the things that I did when I, as I was talking to the CNI co- committee was, I didn't want this position to be named Director of, of Elementary Education. I didn't want it to be a, a coordinator's type position. Even though this, those titles, they do the same thing as executive principal. I wanted to use the name Executive Principal to make sure that everyone understood the focus of what this position was going to be doing. It's going to be working with principals. That's it. They're not going to be handling any other duties and responsibilities. It would just be focused on, on them. So with that, you know, I shared that with the, the committee, but they, they thought that it would be best to maybe just look at bringing in one at this time, rather, rather than looking at two and just to sort of see how that went. And then I could come back again with the, a secondary piece, you know, once evaluating how this initial rollout of the elementary one went, if this was approved.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, the next question I had was for uh the fleet and grounds maintenance. And I guess they're all, my next questions are all surrounded around equity. And I, I really want us to have a, a serious look and a focus on equity when it comes to education for our students. Um, the, I, I'm thankful for the equity officer being a placeholder here. I actually forwarded a report to um Mr. Parent and Dr. Whittaker on this evening. Uh, it's a report that was put out by V S B A um by the Committee on Students and Schools in Challenging Environments that I think will be very helpful with us when uh putting our data together. But even when it comes to the gifted programs, dual enrollment, um uh there, there are equity issues with our government school that ours program, uh which doesn't, that can either, there are issues there, because in that program, uh you'll see that the majority of the students, they can afford to have prior training, starting at early childhood. So those that can't afford their prior training, they normally don't make the cut when it comes to those auditions. So and, and most of them, they don't even apply. So I really want to look at equity across the board uh when it comes to the school division. And with dual enrollment, uh you know, you have some schools that may have double the enrollment as another school. And I, we should know why, you know, um why don't we have more enrolled in the program? So by separating those and also including the F, the equity officer, I think that would be great additions to the school division. With the fleet and grounds maintenance, uh what kept ringing in my mind when you were uh discussing that was that, you know, we used to have a fleet garage, you know, in Portland Public Schools. And with the fleet garage, you could also have auto mechanic uh CTE program. Um, you could have something on entrepreneurship and grounds maintenance. And to me, the CTE school and center keeps ringing out in my mind, uh that is desperately needed. And I think those uh additions with fleet and ground maintenance, though, those are opportunities for us to possibly build on and have serious conversations uh with the city on how that can benefit us as an entirety uh by ha- having a real full fledged CTE school and program in Portsmouth. So um I, I encourage you to try to speak with the city in reference to that as well. But outside of that, I believe this is great. Uh, we definitely need the raises and the increases for our staff. And I think y'all did a great job putting this budget together. And thank you for presenting our needs on behalf of the school division. And I would be remiss just to make sure, um Dr. Whittaker, Mark Whittaker, did you have any uh comments or questions you uh would have for Dr. Bracy or the staff at this time?
Thank you, um Chair of Reverend Patillo and to uh Vice Chair Atkinson uh and to our Superintendent, Dr. Bracy and all of the board members, uh those who I've served with in the past, and also uh to um this Teamless and Miss Patterson, who have been uh the veteran staff. It is good to be with you again. Um, I, I'm here tonight particularly um to hear the superintendent's presentation because myself and Deandre Barnes, um we're serving as the liaisons uh to the uh school board uh this year. And first of all, I just want to reassure school board, superintendent, the staff, uh that you have a supportive and a listening ear. Um, you have a council uh that is highly supportive of education. Uh, I believe the relationship um needs to be restored uh to one of harmony and working together. And I believe that we're going to do that. And as I listened tonight to the presentation and uh just heard Reverend Patillo's comments about uh equity, that's, that's really how um I think our budget should be viewed when we are talking about funding our children. Uh, we have to deal with the issue of equity, because there's been so much inequity uh in education, particularly with the Old Dominion. Um, the increase that uh Dr. Bracy has presented, uh I don't really see that as a raise, uh because there have been so much cuts uh that we have to restore and surpass. And so we're going to advocate very strongly um that uh the school board receive the two point four. Uh, I think that most candidates who ran a run on education and we're going to hold them to that. As you know, a budget is just whatever the organization prioritizes. And we're going to definitely put a priority, making sure that the needs of our children are met. And so I'm going to uh commend this board uh for presenting an aggressive uh budget. Commend our superintendent for presenting a very aggressive budget. And we're going to push and uh make sure that these needs are met. And we're going to work together, want to make sure that our school system is representative of what it should be for all of our children. And so I thank you for your efforts and your commitments. And I look forward to working with you again as we move the school system in a higher way. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. If we had no other uh comments or concerns on the superintendent's uh presentation of needs, I'm going to move to Agenda Item three point three. Uh, before I, I do that, this is a discussion item. So if there are further questions that you have with the superintendent in reference to this estimate of needs, please feel free to send him emails and references to your questions, and we can go over to our next meeting. Um, Agenda Item three point three, discussion instructional calendar for twenty one, twenty two and twenty two, twenty three. I believe that's Dr. Cromarty.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Let me get my screen shared here. Mister Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Bracy and the viewing public, I'm happy to present draft calendars for the twenty twenty one, twenty two and twenty twenty two, twenty three academic years. To talk a little bit about how we got here. Let me get my thing to move here. We had a calendar committee that represented every facet of our organization with Portsmouth Public Schools. And I know that the names are on the screen so that everyone can read, but to show my thanks and gratitude, I'd like to publicly acknowledge these folks individually for their tireless work in helping us draft these calendars. It's a, it's certainly an undertaking in addition to their regular staffs in a virtual setting. So I'd like to publicly thank Dr. Camilla Farabee, Principal at William E. Waters Middle, Dr. Laguna Foster, Principal at I C Norcom High School, Ms. Dusty Johnson from Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Fiona Nichols from Curriculum and Instruction, Mr. Kevin Privet from Transportation, Ms. Crystal Satchel from Human Resources, Lorraine Schlichty from School Counseling, Dr. Bernadette Smith, Principal at Lakeview Elementary, and Dr. Wayne Smith, Principal at Victory Elementary. When we began this, we had one goal, and that was to present to you all for your consideration a one hundred and eighty day school calendar. One of the benefits that's come from this pandemic is that we've gotten really good at offering virtual instruction. So that's going to help us in the future when we have to miss days due to inclement weather, be it a hurricane, snow or other event. So we would have difficulty in the past trying to find one or two days for makeup. That wasn't a difficulty for us this year, because we've got the virtual option to satisfy days that have to be made up. We considered our traditional board priorities, which are a post Labor Day start, half day of professional development at the end of September and October, parent teacher conferences, the second week of October, election day as a workday when applicable, a teacher workday each marking period, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and there's an asterisk there, I'll talk about that in a second, and then a two week winter break for employees. We're proud to say that in calendars for both academic years, we were able to deliver on all things except the Wednesday before Thanksgiving being a full holiday. It is an early release day reflected in both calendars. So the calendars have been put in your board docs. I can certainly show them here on the screen, but I'd like to entertain any questions that the board members may have about either or both calendars.
Thank you so much, sir. Uh Board Members, do you have any questions? I'm trying to see if there's a screen share on. Mr. Parent?
Uh, just want to commend the um committee, because uh we have in years that requested that um the winter break be two weeks. And I, when I looked at the calendar this afternoon and saw that in twenty one, twenty two, twenty two and twenty three, of course, on twenty one, Christmas comes on that Saturday, but the, it's always so good for teachers to have the ten full days. And also the uh, you know, on, when you get to Thanksgiving, um, you know, that Wednesday is always very, very difficult, because um they gotta go home, teachers gotta go home and cook. And and I think having a uh teacher workday, a half a day, um allows them to leave early. Um, and that, that's what I, I, I'm really glad about the, the winter break and then the um the half day for, but the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, I think that's great. So it's a good job. Thank you very much.
Sir, uh scrolling through here. Ms. Hines? You, you're on mute? Oh, okay.
Sorry, I was doing screen share and split screen and I couldn't find my unmute button. I do apologize. Um, I'm always going to be the advocate for the Wednesday off before Thanksgiving. I'm always going to be that advocate, and I'm always going to ask the question, there's no way that we can make it happen on either calendar, Dr. Cromarty?
No ma'am, and I, I am sorry that we couldn't, but when you look at it, in, in order to squeeze in that teacher workday for every quarter, and in November, we sort of made it double dip as election day, but in order for us to give our uh instructional staff a teacher workday every quarter, we run out of days. And we have to have some hours on record for the twenty fourth to count as an instructional day. So the best we could do is an early release. Uh, there was conversation about maybe considering that to be a virtual day.
That was my next question. Could we make that a virtually asynchronous day like our Wednesdays are now? And I guess that question would be, and I didn't mean to cut you off. I'm sorry. I'm just, my brain.
No, you're fine.
But would that count as far as school hours is concerned?
Yeah, i- if, if that is the will of the board to make the day, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving a virtual day, you, you all may certainly exercise that will. We'll be fine as far as instructional hours go either way.
Okay. I mean, I, I got so much positive feedback this year from having that three day weekend where you could just you, where you were, you were in your element and you, you know, and I understand with it being asynchronous work still has to happen, but it's not like you're i- it's not like you're going to go to the building and have to come home, you know, that you're in, you're in a different zone. Um, and the stress level is a little bit different. Um, but I, we got so much positive feedback and so many kudos for making that a three day event, that I would really like for us to consider making that another three day event in both of these calendars. Um, as long as we have the virtual option, I would, I, I would ask the board when we do vote, vote on this, to make that a virtual workday. I'm finished. Thank you. Finished. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Parent?
Uh, Dr. Cromarty, the, the, the staff, the students have to go until eleven o'clock. Is that correct to be counted as a for us to be counted as a day? Is that, we have to go till eleven o'clock?
Well, well, we have two, we have two types of early dismissal days. We have one that's titled an early dismissal day. And you are correct, that's the day where our high school students get out just a shade before eleven o'clock. And then we have an early release day. And in the early release, our latest elementary schools leave about one thirty. This has traditionally been an early release day. So to consider, to consider it a half day is yet another option that we have in the event that families want to hit the road to travel or anything like that. We could also abbreviate the day even more by making it a half day.
Right. And that's what I, that's definitely. Right. And that's what I, that's definitely what I would I would recommend. And if I and I certainly support Mrs. Hines's recommendation, if we can have a virtual day, that would be great.
So the good news is if it's the will of the board, there's there's nothing that prohibits us from going either of those routes. So long as it's what you all want us to do. We'd be fine in terms of seat hours at the high school. We'd be fine in terms of days on record, so long as we count it as an asynchronous day with real learning activity taking place. We'll be fine at the elementary schools as well for a hundred and eighty day flush calendar.
Thank you. I don't believe that anyone on the board objects to the asynchronous day, looking at what I'm seeing on the screen here. So Dr. Cromarty, I would say go ahead and prepare it with the asynchronous day. And we can vote on that at our next meeting. Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chairman, because the other piece I want to address here that maybe not everybody fully understands. It for the middle and the high schools, yes, it's an it it it's a more of an early release day than it is for the elementary schools when you talk about transportation and the availability of buses. Because those elementary schools, when you're short of bus, if you have bus drivers that call out, what started off as an early release day for those students and for those teachers sometimes ends up being almost a full day, just waiting for transportation to come and pick up those kids. So when we're, when we talk about across the board providing that, I really want to make sure that we are able to provide that time off for our staff.
So the calendar that I will bring, that Kathy will bring forward to you guys for vote next month, will reflect the Wednesday before Thanksgiving for academic years twenty one, twenty two and twenty two, twenty three as asynchronous days. I can certainly make that change.
Thank you so much for that, sir. Any other have any other comments or questions at this time?
Patillo, I have one more, sorry. So with that being said, are we are are we looking at issuing Chromebooks for every student again next year to make sure that we are virtual, that we do have that option?
Absolutely. They already have their Chromebooks and likely will retain those.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I should say their devices, not all of them have Chromebooks, but whatever school board issued device they have, they will have.
Okay, all righty. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Yes, yes, thank you. I have a question about, this is not so much of a popular opinion, so I'm not saying I'm advocating for it, but I just have heard talks about Saturday school or some type of additional school days in the calendar. Going forward, does this calendar consider consider those days, Dr. Cromarty, or?
No, ma'am, not at this time. The the calendar that we've put forth is just the one hundred and eighty day traditional instructional calendar, days inclusive, Monday through Friday. There was something that came out today. I got it as a pop up, but didn't have the opportunity to read it yet about the governor doing some public advocacy for year round schooling. I don't know how that will look in locales, Ms. Thomas. I really don't. But this calendar is the best effort at a hundred and eighty day traditional, Monday through Friday instructional calendar.
Okay, so does the process, do we kind of come back to the process as we get more information about depending on, okay. I saw you, I saw you shake. Okay.
Yes, ma'am, and the board may amend the calendar at any time. Absolutely.
Yeah, and I just want to add that the governor, he he may be advocating for year round school, but he hasn't proposed any funding to assist with that as well, because we'll take additional funds to continue to produce instruction throughout the summer and also you you may have some staffing issues as well with that. So we're definitely mindful of that, but I I'm not one for listening to unfunded mandates a lot. We don't have to do it, so. Thank you all for that, for the calendar. Next item we have is three point four, the agenda review, February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty one. You board members, you have that in front of you and your board docs, you all have any questions about the agenda for our next meeting on February the eighteenth?
I had a question. I wanted to know if we could get an update on the disparity study?
Okay.
Thank you.
And Dr. Brace, you'll take care of that?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions or concerns in reference to the agenda for February the eighteenth? All right, moving along, three point five, discussion board member reports. Do we have any reports at this time from board members? I see Ms. Thomas.
Oh, yes, I was just going to provide, thank you, Chairman Patillo, just a, we already went over the basic discussion from our budget and finance committee meeting, but I did want to add one thing because for a member, Hines did bring this up and it was definitely a definite discussion about the step increases that our superintendent, Mr. Falk, they understand the need, the want and desires of the board, myself included, and I heard Mr. Tillage as well, so. But to your point, Ms. Hines, it's in the view, but like you said, it has to have a compensation study first to also look at some of the risk in in terms of absorbing the cost to bring everyone to the correct step. So that was a discussion before I I had it with Dr. Brace and Mr. Falk. So it's on their viewpoint, their view, but just wanted to to piggyback off of that because, yeah, definitely was a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schumate.
Thank you, Chairman Patillo. Two things. First, I want to just thank Dr. Brace and his team for coming up with the Here to Help. I know when I initially, and I don't want to stay harassed, but I feel like I did in September of twenty twenty, Dr. Brace about coming up with something for us to do to help not only the students, but the families as well as the teachers and the staff because of everything that was going on, not just the pandemic, but we had a couple of people, a couple of incidents rather of suicides within the city. There there is a lot of crime happening within the city. So that takes a toll on a lot of people. So I appreciate you, Dr. Brace. I also want to say thank you to Dr. Ingrid Whitaker for bringing it up again and pushing the issue at the first meeting. So I really do appreciate you as well as everyone else who voiced their opinion about the Here to Help. Also, a really quick update with the C T E committee. We are working on a lot of great things. The only thing that we're having an issue with right now is the nursing program. We have reached out to Portsmouth Health Department as well as Portsmouth Naval Medical Center to try to get their hours. Due to COVID, you don't want to put them at risk. So that's a little bit of an issue right now, dealing with our C N A program. Really quickly, one of the other things that I personally have been working on and that's going to be really beneficial and Mr. Patillo, Reverend Patillo, you mentioned about the automotive program possibly coming back to us as a form of the C T E program, and that's actually what we're working on as well. We have an automotive program with T C C, but I have advocated for us to bring it back to just Portsmouth Public Schools. And one of the ways we can do that is by implementing the Virginia Registered Apprenticeship Program, which is what I've been working on for the past eight months or so. So we're going to present something in the near future to the board as well as the public to advocate for us to have a Virginia Registered Apprenticeship Program so that we can have our students ready and prepared for life after high school. So that's all I have. Chairman Patillo, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to update you on a report from the Legislative Committee that I serve on. Senator Lucas contacted me yesterday about the bill that passed the Senate mandating that all schools open up in September. So of course, she she wanted to know my position and her position was that she was voting no, that she felt that that should be left up to the localities instead of the state mandating or telling the local school boards when they need to to open. So I know it did pass the state and I know it has to go to the House, so I don't know where that will be. And also, I'm not sure if all the board members received the instruction from V S, from the V A on the SOQ funded positions where they wanted us to write and send letters to our legislators about the equity and staffing so the state could begin fully funding these positions instead of just the SOQ funded ones. So I did write on that and I spoke, I sent letters to our delegation on that and I think I tagged all the board members so that you could do the same. So the more advocacy we have, the better. And Sarah and I met with the curriculum and instruction and I think what you've heard here tonight is basically the discussion that we had in that meeting as well. Sarah?
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Thank you, Card. Thank you, Chairman Patillo. If it's the will, i- am I okay to go right this minute? Because there, okay.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, because the other thing that came out of that meeting was the, because was the discussion about extended summer school slash year, year long school. We did have a conversation about that and as Dr. Cromarty mentioned earlier, if if we do year long school, that has budget and planning implications that just can't be snapped up. That it would have to, you know, we're talking, you know, extended funding, we're talking a lot of budget that goes into it, but also to a lot of curriculum planning that goes into it as well. What we did talk about was summer school and how to address some of the gaps, but then also to how are we going to address those students in transition, you know, that are moving school to school and have missed that transition during this pandemic. So we are having the discussions about what summer school is going to look like. For those people that, I mean, I, you know, as soon as the governor said what it was, he said today, you know, I'm driving home and my phone is just going ballistic because people want to know what we're going to do about year long school. And I want everybody to understand that we're hearing the information at the same time you guys are hearing the information. We we're not holding back here. We're holding on with you, trying to figure out what it is that we're going to do. And as Chairman Patillo said, what we're going to do about unfunded mandates, because that is a, that is a huge unfunded mandate to open up school at a year long process. So you guys hear it at the same time that we hear it. And so I just wanted everybody to kind of know, we've asked those questions, we're doing what it is that we can do and we will figure it out as best as we can. So that's really what I wanted to say. The other thing, and you guys have heard, like Ms. Williams said, you guys have heard basically our curriculum and instruction discussion. But I really, I just personally wanted to say thank you to the teachers and kind of give you a shout out because we're halfway through this school year. This crazy school year, our high school kids have started new classes this week. Our kids are coming back and we're in second semester and I just have a Bon Jovi song in my head. I won't sing for you guys tonight. But we're all, you know, we're there and we're moving. And so for the hard work and the energy and the effort and the dedication to those teachers and to all the staff that is making this work, I just want to say thank you. Your hard work hasn't gone unnoticed. We have kids that are thriving in this. We also have kids that are struggling, me included, because you guys know I'm a teacher as well. So I just want to encourage those teachers to keep on doing all, you know, keep doing what you're doing and find different ways to reach to our kids that may need that extra love and care from you. So thank you for what you're doing. We're here to support you. I'm finished. Thank you, Cardell. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have any other board number reports at this time? So again, I just want to say thank you again to Ms. Dorn and her staff for making the Moderna vaccine accessible to school employees starting on yesterday. And I believe we have two more sessions scheduled for our staff to to be able to receive the vaccine if if that's their choice. I also want to thank Lauren and I want to thank our mental health committee of Dr. Whitaker and Ms. Schumate for overseeing the project, for giving the 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 video about stressing the importance of mental health and our concern for our parents and our staff and our students. And I also want to thank our custodial staff who continues every day to keep our buildings and our buses clean for our food deliveries and for our parents who are still visiting schools and our staff that are in the schools that is not unnoticed. And you all are the real M V Ps in my book for making things happen every day for Portland Public Schools. So thank you again, y'all, for for joining us on this evening. And if there are no other questions or concerns, I consider this meeting adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night.